...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Grant is absent. Council Henderson.
Here.
Council Folsom.
Here.
Council Butterfield.
Here.
Council Langer.
Here.
Council Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. We have one item on our consent agenda this evening.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Moved and seconded all in favor of approving consent agenda as presented. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. We do not have a presentation today. Our Eagle Scout is in college, so we sent him a letter of congratulations along with the certificate. Citizen comment, request from council to skip citizen comments since it's such a short agenda and moved to public hearing. If there's no objection, we'll do that.
I have citizen comment. I haven't spoken in front of you for over a year.
I would move that we allow the citizens to comment since we have the time.
Okay. Great.
Susan Claus, 222-111 Southwest Pacific Highway, Sherwood, Oregon. And I'll turn this sheet in when I'm done. I have a couple of comments. One of them is, we're in the middle of some hearings at the Planning Commission level for an unnamed major tenant that's going to have a seismic impact on our town. And apparently, nobody can tell us who it is, although Fred Meyer says it's Walmart. The word around the street is it's Walmart, and nobody's denying it's not Walmart. And if I was a developer and it wasn't Walmart, the first thing I would do is try to distance myself from the fact that that tenant's not going to be Walmart or one of its subsidiaries or groups or whatever associated with it. But my main point here, in addition to the non-disclosure for this and the fact that we've got a city councilman on here, that this is his property and he refuses, even on a fundamental level, to the citizens to feel like he has an obligation to let us know, Matt Langer. The other problem that I have is, the way that the appeal is structured for this particular application, it's a site plan and it's a site plan review. The city charged somewhere north of $13,000, Matt could tell us exactly what it was, for the site plan review. The way that you have your fee structure is for anybody to appeal this from the Planning Commission, which is an appointed body, which only requires four votes of citizens who are unelected, to the city council, which all seven of you are elected officials. Someone who wants to appeal that has to provide one-half of the site development fee that was charged. You're talking about $7,000, $6,500, are you kidding me? To have something in front of the city council that is such a fundamental change, not only in our transportation network along Pualatin Sherwood Road, but to our existing businesses, there's a reason that Walmart or a huge anchor tenant like that is called a category killer. We have existing businesses that aren't going to be here if someone like Walmart does come into town. If it's not Walmart, please tell us. The anxiety is ridiculous. If you're a small business person and you've got an optometry shop, you're going to get killed if Walmart comes in. If you're a little toy store, you're going to get killed. If you're Safeway, if you're Albertsons, all of these are going to have an impact potentially. And I don't think it's fair to these people that have suffered through the economy and all of the downturn, that the minute that there's breathing room, we bring in someone that kills a portion of our businesses. And that we don't have the ability as citizens to put that in front of the elected officials so you guys are the ones making the decisions, you guys go on record. In essence, you guys are dodging a bullet that you shouldn't be dodging. It should be, if that's what we're going to do in this town, our elected officials should be making that decision. You guys have the ability to bring that up on your own motion that's not going to cost the citizens anything. And then it's before you, then it's our elected officials that put that vote together and either decide yea or nay, or even decide the stipulations because they're guessing, they're giving us guesses at what the traffic impacts will be because it's the unknown 145,000 square foot tenant. Different tenants are going to do different impacts. Somebody like Walmart, it's a huge impact. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Susan, don't forget to turn the form in, please.
Pardon me?
I was making a comment to Susan.
Robert James Claus, 222-111 Southwest Pacific Highway. You go along with the city, you go along with the city, and you try to fight public policy. And then you get to a point where you don't. I've crossed that line. What we're looking for is damages and we're looking for a lawsuit. And that's going to involve a lot of things. As a point of order, I'd like to know who's paying Barry and Elster and Hammond to be here. Is it the mayor? Is it the city council? Is it the city manager? He is under contract and one of the three of you have to employ him to be here. Now, the reason I say that is you don't have a city attorney. You have legal advice that specifically goes to advocate your position. That's fine, he's very good at that, and his wife is very politically active. My favorite joke about her is the only time she uses elders, when she digs her dog out her last name. I think that's a comment of what she thinks about other attorneys. But be the case as it may, what you're doing is inching towards litigation and damages. Now, I'm going to give you an example. On our subdivision on McFaul, we could not sell it for four years. It's the best subdivision in town, and we couldn't sell it. Why couldn't we sell it? Because about two years ago, your staff went down there and put Cedar Creek Boulevard, put Cedar Creek Pathway on there, and then lied to Metro. Now, the nice part about that lie is you lied to Metro. You lied to Dan Cooper, and you lied to Governor Barbara Roberts. Now, that's a bad idea. Because as clever as Barry, Elster, and Hammond are politically, they cross those people, and there's going to be results. Now, why do I tell you that? Because I was involved in the largest construction defect litigation case in Northern California, and we had to go over stigma on a subdivision. You have caused Susan and I close to $200,000 on that subdivision by lying and playing games over a pathway that Dan Cooper has forced you to put in the right place, which is across the creek. Now, this is just part of the kind of games you play. It's no question it's Walmart, and we know. We know you got the letter of intent from Chuck Martinez, $15 a foot. He told you you had to separate out the property because they had to have a separate property. You sat here for two years and manipulated codes to get there. Now, you've got a funny-diddle tax exchange, then it goes over to Walmart. Come on. Nobody's denying any of that. But that's exactly what you're doing. You have now taken over the entire process. You don't like a subdivision, you create a stigma on it. You don't want somebody to develop, you create a road that you then go back and create. Now, what I've always found amusing with people like you folks is when the lawsuits start flying and you start spending a day and a half telling us what kind of underwear you wear, you aren't half as smart as you were the week before. Now, my wife and I are doing everything we can to let you clowns get this staff out of where they are, but your time's really running out. Because you constantly attack our property with this staff, and we're documenting it now to a number of agencies in this state. So friends and neighbors, take a friendly piece of advice, be a little careful because it's now a damage matter, and I would recommend you get your own attorney.
Eugene Stewart?
Eugene Stewart, 22595, property owner. One thing I've noticed is, on the Planning Commission, a lot of times when they have their meetings, they don't have the minutes from the last minute meeting. It would seem it wouldn't be productive to have them there, especially if people wanted to review the minutes for an action down the road. I understand probably staff is a little tight in that area is probably why it doesn't get there, but it just seems like it should be kind of a goal trying to achieve is that when the Planning Commission meets, they have the minutes from the prior meeting. You seem to have it all the time here, so is there a way we can get it for the Planning Commission, too? I think it'd be helpful for everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Eugene. As I've told the Claus family for better part of 20 years, if you think we've wronged you, sue us. Because we treat everyone fairly and equally and honestly and transparent, and we continue to get the same threats, either in public comment or harassing staff or counselors at home. So I said to any person, if we have wronged anyone, don't hesitate, take us to court. But it hasn't happened from that family, ever. Moving on to public hearing. We have ordinance 2012-012 approving an amendment to the Transportation System Plan and Comprehensive Plan regarding the functional classification of Cedar Brookway. Julia?
Don't you have a script to read while we're getting our laptops out?
Yes. Yes, I do, thank you. The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening on ordinance 2012-012, approving an amendment to the Transportation System Plan and Comprehensive Plan regarding the functional classification of Cedar Brookway. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear a staff report, receive public comment, receive additional staff comments, and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. Please limit your testimony to four minutes.
Would you like me to begin?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mays and council. Before you is Plan Amendment 1203 for the Transportation System Plan Amendment regarding Cedar Brookway. Let's see if I can figure this out. Just a quick background, Transportation System Plan that's currently in place was updated in 2005. There have been five amendments to the TSP since then. Four were for concept plan areas where we made changes to functional classifications, local street plan, intersection improvements. And then we also had one functional classification change to Columbia Street related to the Cannery Project. The city is planning on beginning a comprehensive update to the TSP next year. We actually just recently found out that we've received a TGM grant award for that, so that will help fund that, which is very exciting. But we have identified that there's several issues that need to be addressed sooner to help facilitate development and public infrastructure. Specifically, these include the street functional classification uncertainty regarding in the Cedar Brookway area, and sorry, council can't see this, but I'm going to point anyways, this is Pacific Highway, Elworth, Handley, and Cedar Brookway. And it's really this area that's involved and in question, and there's uncertainty regarding the classification, and I'll get to that in just a second. The TSP is also not clear regarding connectivity requirements between Elworth and Handley on its way to Minneke. And then Washington County requirements will only allow connection to their arterial streets by a collector or another arterial. There are exceptions, but it's a process that would have to be gone through, and that's not a guarantee or certainty, and that's, the discussion of that is actually documented in your packets in, I think it's Exhibit 1K, and it's a memo from me to the Planning Commission. To get to the specifics regarding the uncertainty or lack of clarity, in our existing TSP, we've got a local street connectivity map that clearly shows some local street connections in this area. But then we also have our functional classification map that generally is showing collectors, neighborhood routes, arterials, the principal arterial. It does show a proposed local street, but then our streets for right-of-way is planned for more than two lanes. Generally, green in the TSP world means a collector, and you can see that this street in this area is green, and it's also identified for three lanes, which is generally an indication of a higher classification street. So that's caused some uncertainty as far as what the size requirements are, if it's creditable for SDCs or county transportation development taxes. And it's caused uncertainty. So as a result, so as a result of that uncertainty, we decided to try to address these issues to help facilitate development, clear up these issues. We had a study prepared, DKS and Associates prepared the study, and that is actually in your memo as Exhibit 1B. We mailed letters to affected property owners to let them know that we were beginning the study. We also held a open house on May 31st. Again, we mailed notice to the property owners in the area where that road connection would occur. We also posted notices around town and in the paper. We had 14 people attend, I think 14 people attend, we at least had 14 people sign in, but I'm pretty sure that was pretty close. June 26, we had a work session with the Planning Commission, where we were provided direction to proceed with a specific amendment and noticing. We noticed, we published notices in the paper and posted notices in accordance with the code. We also, as a courtesy, mailed notice to the property owners in the area that would be affected by that road extension. And we had a Planning Commission hearing on August 14th, as well as September 11th, where they forwarded a recommendation. The findings in the record, I just want to kind of state this so that you know it as well as the public. The proposed TSP amendments were reviewed for consistency with local, regional, and state rules. This is outlined in Exhibit A of your, the packet as well as the ordinance, and so if you're adopting the ordinance, you'll actually be adopting those findings and analysis as well. Also in the Planning Commission packet, as well as your packet, is Exhibits 1A through 1K, which were reviewed by the Planning Commission prior to making their recommendation. Exhibit 1A is the proposed amendments, and again, that would be something that would be adopted with the ordinance. And 1B is the DKS memo analyzing several scenarios for the connectivity. There were actually four alternatives that were reviewed in that memo, and what's in front of you is sort of a hybrid or a combination of Option 3 and 4, which is the connection from Elworth to Minneke with an access to 99W, but not saying whether or not it's a right-in, right-out, or a full access intersection that would be dependent on development when that connection is ready to be made. Also, we received this today, three exhibits, Exhibit, what I'm calling Exhibit 2, 3, and 4, all from Mr. and Mrs. Claus. I think those are being distributed to you or will be shortly, and I'd be happy to respond to anything in there if you would like. The Planning Commission recommendation specifically is to change the classification of Cedar Brookway from a local to a collector street. Clarify Cedar Brookway is intended to connect between Handley and Elworth. Confirm one access connection from Cedar Brookway to 99W. The vicinity is going to be 99, 990 feet from each existing intersection. And then essentially acknowledging that full access or right-in, right-out would be determined based on development. And then also, the Planning Commission wanted to, they did discuss and confirm that Bouchong Terrace remains a local connection option, but they realized that that, whether or not it needs to be extended, would really be determined at the time of development of the Elk's property and whether or not it meets the needs and criteria for topography and things like that. And that's pretty much my report. The recommendation that we have in front of you is to hold the public hearing and consider adoption of Ordinance 2012-012, amending the Transportation System Plan and Comprehensive Plan regarding the functional classification of Cedar Brookway. Any questions?
Let, get citizen comment on the suggested ordinance?
Okay.
Before I start, there's a point of order. You have a letter up there that says about Keith Mays, two of the property owners in this affected area are supporters, endorsement of Keith Mays for running for mayor, or have contributed money, and the request is for Keith to recuse himself.
I don't believe there is any proposed or alleged conflict of interest, and, yeah, I'd say, so.
So what are you saying? That you're not going to recuse yourself? You have five of the affected property owners, two of them are supporters of you in the newspaper, in the October 2012 Gazette, and you're saying that you can deliver a decision that is unbiased and absolutely without consideration of your supporters? Not surprised. So is there any way to object to that? Is that, can we ask the attorney? I'm not, please don't start my time yet. I'm still trying to get a point of order here. Do we get to ask the attorney what that process is?
Your objection is noted for the record.
Okay, does the city attorney comment on that, or what?
We can ask?
Can I ask one of my clients to comment? I don't comment.
Who's your client?
Right now, the council.
The council's your client?
Right, so.
The city is my client. Council is the elected body that represents my client. Unless I'm asked by a member of the council to comment, I try to keep my comments to myself.
Great.
Could anyone?
Please, you're eating up your time.
I'm not eating up my time, this is a point of order. The process in all of this has been problematic from the beginning. Our property is being bisected by this proposed road, and at a point, at the Planning Commission level, we were told that everyone was going to get together, or at least we were going to get together with the staff and try to work some kind of a situation out here. And Tom Pesamere waited till the day right before the hearing, September 10th, September 11th was the hearing, and met with us for 40 minutes and basically said, there's no proportionality that the city contemplates in any of this, and that somehow we are to bridge a gully that is there, plus bring it through the middle of our property at our own expense with some reimbursement contemplated by the city that is capped by some extensive crazy calculation that will happen at the time. And yet, you still have, in your code, you have reimbursement districts that you could invoke, you could put something together that delivered proportionality. Jim and I have two accesses on our home place, and then one on another piece of property that's also impacted by this. Deeded accesses, it wasn't until the last meeting of September 11th that the DKS representative admitted that his original report did not correctly reflect our deeded accesses. And part of my objection and my point here is, we are putting a collector road from Minneke now all the way to Elworth on some properties that have already given up their access rights, whether it's a reservation of right or whether it's a deeded access, to the highway. And the proposal, I guess, is that Jim and I are supposed to use our access points to bring that city street over to the highway, and that it's going to be an access point that, I actually don't know what you, I mean, I know you don't want to pay for that property right that we own, and I know that this has been pushed through and that all of the ODOT personnel that are involved with access and the previous Oregon Access project went through have not been informed of this project. It's, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. You've had planners at ODOT being involved in this process and not the access people that have to address the Oregon Access money that you already took back in 2000, 2002, whenever it was, plus what we're trying to do here.
Thank you, Susan.
When we have previous commitments. Thank you.
Eugene Stewart, 22595, Southwest Pine Street, property owner. One of the things I noticed, taking through some stuff, is that your notice you sent down to DLCD, notice of proposed amendment, says this is a Transportation System Plan Amendment. But yet, if you look at Part 2 of your plan, Chapter 6, Goal 2, Policy 2, "The city shall maintain a transportation plan map that shows the functional classifications of all streets within the Sherwood urban growth area. Changes to the functional classification of streets must be approved through an amendment to the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan, Part 2, Chapter 6, Transportation 1." So what is this, or I don't understand why you say it's an amendment to the TSP when within your ordinances you say it's a amendment to your plan? Also, on the document you sent down to DLCD, you say that it's applicable statewide planning goals is Goal 1, and that's citizen involvement. If you look at the Part 3, which is the code part that you have recorded, it just says the code shall be administered in conjunction with and in a manner that is consistent with the policies and strategies adopted in the City of Sherwood, Oregon Community Development Plan, Part 2 of the City Comprehensive Plan. Then, as you look through Part 2 of the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 1, Page 1, "The community development plan, when adopted together with the background data and analysis, Part 1, and Community Zoning and Development Code, Part 3, will constitute the City of Sherwood's Comprehensive Plan." The Sherwood Comprehensive Plan consists of three parts, background data analysis, the community development plan, and community zoning and development code. Parts 1 and 2 are organized in sections relating to the seven major topics of the plan, of which the first one is citizen and agency participation in the planning process. Also, within Part 2, under definitions, you have CAC as Citizens Advisory Committee, the committee responsible for the 1989 Comprehensive Plan Update. Several times I've been told that it's the Planning Commission. The CCI is the Committee for Citizen Involvement in the City, known as the Sherwood Citizens Planning Advisory Committee, which is symbolized as SCPAC. Further back in your definitions, that's Further back in your definitions, that's was Sherwood Citizens Planning Advisory Committee. Then, when you go to Chapter Two, the planning process under citizen involvement, "The City of Sherwood is committed to maintaining a creative and responsive planning process which assures the opportunity for the involvement of all parties affected by development decisions in the urban growth boundary consistent with LCDC Goal One. To that end, the city has adopted a citizens' involvement plan outlining how it intends to assure opportunity for citizen involvement in the planning process. The goals of the programs are as follows: to ensure opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases," it also references Part One. What's interesting is that Part Two and Part One, the ordinance that created originally was repeal and replaced with what you now have, your current code, Part Two. So, my question is, is what is the citizen involvement plan? And I don't think, if you look at the statewide goals, the few meetings you had did not meet that, what the city had said originally and what the state wants you to follow. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. James Claus.
I'll repeat the same request for you to recuse yourself, and I'll add documentation to the files that we can proceed from there. And there is my testimony. Robert James Claus, two-two-one-one, Southwest Pacific Highway. Now, the fact of the matter is that you lie and your staff lies and falsifies reports. Today, I called ODOT and said Seth Brumley has okayed this. His supervisor got on the line and said, "Give me the number of what you're talking about." Pennington. Whoa! She said, "It's not in the system. What are you talking about?" That's right, she had the wrong code number you sent to him, and he was not speaking for ODOT. Now, that's just a minor line, there's nothing you can do about it, give him sovereign immunity. But you do not have ODOT clearance. I then talked to Loretta Kiefer. She's the access manager for this district. She said, "Wait a minute, you have three deeded ingress and egresses, and even if you ignore the seventy-four exemption, which we can't, they have to be paid for. Are you telling me they gave them to the Broadhursts?" Yeah. Well, she said, "What about Nathan Doyle?" I said, "He's still entering the highway illegally." And he went in and moved six feet of fill, and then built a parking lot, and converted the use, and continued to enter ninety-nine W. She said, "Are you informing our head office about this?" I said, "We're going a little further than that." Now, what's my point to you folks? LCDC thinks this is a land use hearing. I talked to her today. She said, "What are you talking about? They are changing Access Oregon's agreement. And Mays, according to the county commissioners, is trying to get that twenty acres rezoned around the traffic circle, which they didn't know about." Now, what you have is a very simple system. You parcel the information to varying agencies, and their management doesn't know about Garrett's people had no idea you were intending to walk away from Access Oregon and that million, multi-million dollar grants you received over the last langer clever transaction on Home Depot. You know, it was light industrial, suddenly it turned into a lumberyard that needed a stoplight that was there. We still can't explain how clever, of course. Now, we got another one out here, the same way, name pattern. In short, you haven't notified anybody. No one in management knows about what you're doing. They will next week. Now, what am I trying to tell you? The game's up. Coyote always catches himself. You've run in this path too much. I thought for a long time there was honest notification to the agencies. There's not. I thought you were straightening the facts. I thought you were getting files right. You're not. Spend a day on the telephone, and what you find out is, this is fantasy land. Pesamere's got it down to perfection. Now, my last point is, don't you ever, ever tell me what to do, because of all of the people I have complete contempt for and think are despicable that you and, don't tell me how to run my family. You've already prosecuted my wife's breast cancer, and that was more of your malice, Mays. So, keep your damn mouth shut where my family's concerned, or I will see to it you do.
Always interesting.
Mara Broadhurst, two-eight-four-four-zero, Southwest Lad Hill Road, Sherwood, Oregon. Our property is located between the Elks and the Claus Strip. And when we first started working on this property in nineteen ninety-nine, it was about ten acres. The top six acres off Elworth were residential, and the bottom four acres on ninety-nine W were commercial. We brought Renaissance Homes to develop the residential land along with the Peterson property, and we retained the commercial land. It was determined through subdivision approvals that the old access from Elworth would no longer cut down through the commercial to ninety-nine W, and that Bouchon would handle the residential traffic connectivity. We kept our ninety-nine W access easement on the Claus Strip, which was the old access to Marion Hostler's property they bought from Centex. ODOT was consolidating accesses onto ninety-nine W as no one wanted Sherwood to function like Tigerd, and it was determined that there would be only one access to ninety-nine W between Minekee and Sunset. The other properties with existing businesses or houses could use their accesses until they wanted to develop or change use. Since our property had no existing building, we couldn't use or develop until this access was determined. In two thousand and five, we were very happy Cedar Brookway was finally established on the transportation plan, and many current objections should have been made at that time. Also at that time, the Elks property was not included, as ODOT didn't want cut-through traffic from ninety-nine W to Elworth through residential. In two thousand and seven, we initiated a meeting between the property owners. Julia Hyde, Tom Pesamere were present, and Commissioner Allen attended the second meeting. We were trying to develop our property and had our engineers, AKA, draw up plans to show how the access could work on locations at least nine-hundred-and-ninety feet from the Minekee signal, either all on our property as the plan shows or with the Claus Strip. But there was not enough cooperation to designate a specific plan. This situation has made development of our property practically impossible. The only thing the property owners do seem to agree on is that the city told us that the road would be paid for. The path of Cedar Brookway doesn't change on the other properties, just the designation from local street to collector, thereby making the promised paybacks possible. The new extension of Cedar Brookway cuts our property, our four acres, of general commercial in two pieces. Our main concern is that it's no longer suitable for big box development, and some flexibility of zoning should be allowed. The upper two acres may have to develop as apartment land, and we want to make sure that that would be possible as an allowed secondary use or a PUD. We would also like to know how the utilities are planned so that we can all develop. Please be as specific as possible, and do not leave the property owners arguing amongst themselves. Development has been stifled in this area as the rest of the city moves on. The inclusion of eighteen acres of residential land onto Cedar Brookway allows changes to the access point, as it can now be nine-hundred-and-ninety feet from Sunset as well. How will this be determined and able to proceed without problems? If there is to be a future signal, the logical place is midway between the existing signals and the approximate eighteen acres of residential and the eighteen acres of commercial divided in half, with the ever-popular question of how it's to be paid for. We'd like to thank the Planning Commission and the staff for taking extra time and meeting to explain the road paybacks, and hope that the city council can further this process through a resolution. We would very much like to be able to develop our land and get some services to that part of Sherwood, but we need some concrete facts. Any direction the council could give the staff to address cost and design issues of Cedar Brookway would greatly help the property owners understand what's necessary to develop and how this plan affects them. I think the extension of Cedar Brookway to Elworth is best for Sherwood, and the paybacks make it possible and fair for everyone. Thank you. If you have any questions, please ask Joe. Thank you.
Mara, first. Thank you. Very eloquent, clear of the facts, as, as you've lived them, as most of the rest of the community has, unlike prior testimony. And from my perspective, and I'm just one of seven, if the council supports the suggestion of the, of the proposed ordinance and the Planning Commission recommendation, I think the next step then would be having to have conversations about selecting an alignment and looking about getting, working with property owners for easements to help get, continue to reduce barriers so development can occur with property owners that want to develop. And that's an important part of what a city council should do, and I think that this is the first step of getting there. But first, if the council supports the amendment, then we can take the next steps. So, I very much appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you very much.
I apologize, I, no.
Chirichenko.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Deborah Chirichenko, one-seven-nine-one-nine, Southwest Handley Street. With all due respect, I've lived on Handley in this house for four years and never received a notice about anything about the street for any reason, but actually, I'm, I'm here for something so basic about it that it's not even funny. How you connect Cedar Brookway is how everyone will have to agree to do it, and how you decide what your, the properties will be allowed to do and not do is, is also not my business, actually. But living on Handley, it's as wide as a freeway, and you can't park on my side of the street at all in the vineyards. I'm the property that the young lady backed out of a couple of years ago and ended up in the hospital because somebody was doing forty-five on Handley. So, however you do this, we would love to have some way to control traffic that doesn't involve running out in the street with a piece of paper and a pencil, writing down the license plate number, and calling the Sherwood police, which is what we currently do. I don't know if it involves one more stop sign in front of my house at Stein. I don't know how, when you connect Cedar Brookway, which would be incredibly helpful, at least to those people in the apartments on the ninety-nine, so that they don't have to come out of there and only turn right, it would be nice for them to come out to a light and make a choice, and I don't know that it would add a tremendous amount of traffic in my neighborhood. But even if it does increase the traffic a bit, it would be really nice if the city council could figure out a way for us to reduce the speeds, or else at least enforce the twenty-five miles an hour before somebody gets killed out there. So, I'm not even, I don't even care how, what you do with Cedar Brookway. Is there a way for us to control speeds that don't require the police to sit there and all of the things that everybody's tried to do to help do that?
Yeah, as you, I think, can appreciate, that fundamentally, you want the general behavior of the community to follow the speed limit and be safe for, in every part of our community.
Well, and there's a new school in my neighborhood now, and kids walk, and, you know, they don't pay attention, and they shoot out in the street, and they fall off. We've had a child fly off the scooter and land in the street. Fortunately, nobody was coming. So, that's my only, my only comment. I don't have a gripe about what you do or how you do it. It's just if we could find a way to, to control speeds on Handley with, I feel like with the connection of Cedar Brookway, and certainly with changing how land is used, those parcels are being used, however that turns out, it may add to, to the traffic on Handley, because it's the best route from Elworth to the ninety-nine right now, and, you know, with one or two stop signs, you can shoot right through.
Right.
So.
Well, I certainly appreciate your testimony and general neutrality of the proposed ordinance.
Yeah.
But, but council certainly heard your concerns, and I, and City Manager Joe Gall has heard them, and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And we'll pass along your contact information as well to Joe, to, or whoever, staff to get back with you.
Welcome, Ken.
How you doing? Ken Shannon, two-two-two-seven-five, Southwest Pacific Highway. I own the Trading Post out there in the Antique Mall. I have seven acres. Having no ideas how the road really can go across my property, but I am for alternate three, just for the right in and right out. We fought very hard for that for a lot of years. ODOT's finally signed off on it that we get it. That's extremely important to us. And this is a start, getting this developed out there. It has been a problem developing, because no one knows how to get on and off the properties. And we've had to, we've tried to have meetings with, with the landowners getting together, and it's not working. My neighbor's a little hard-headed, and both of them, and I'm easygoing, and you know how that works.
Well, I remember, was it seven years ago, we all got together in a room, and it ended up with everybody yelling at each other?
Well, we weren't yelling, but, um.
Well, a couple, one or two.
However that flies. My total concerns, I've been out there forty years. I'm concerned about how this is going to be paid for. I'm not a road builder. I'm not a developer. I'm not going to be. You people come to my property land with your ideas, I'm going to listen to them, do what I can, but bring a checkbook with you. I'll stay there a long time. I'll put my land in family trust. I really don't care. I'm very happy there. My wife wants a new home, but you know how that goes. You'll work with that. But I guess, like, I just, I am for alternate three, but, boy, we have to know the alignment. We have to know where it's going to go, how it's going to cross our property. For the most part, myself, I think this is just, it's a waste of damn good land, but we've got to have the access out there. And I know for you people, we're used to it, and it'd be nice if the, if the property owners could get together and make something work. And I'll do my best with it, honest to God it will. See how that flies. But I, I am for something, having something starting, and this is, this is the start, and I appreciate that.
Great.
Questions?
Looking good.
Can I take a minute? Can I take a minute, because I didn't get here in time to make a complaint, for citizen complaints? I got a minute forty-eight left.
Unfortunately.
Hey, listen, I'm getting old, it's harder for me to read. I get the Tigerd Times, I can't wait to get to Second and see what Sherwood's doing, what's on the applications, and hell, I can't read it. The print is way too small. I mean to tell you, there's no way in hell I can read that. Not going to go.
The Tigerd Times?
Yeah, is there any way you could work on picking that print up just a little bit, so, but it looks like you're hiding something.
Pass along the request.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like you're hiding something. You know what I mean?
That's the last form for comment on the proposed ordinance. Any others going once, going twice? We'll close the public hearing. Paul, before we move forward for questions of council, and for the past fifteen years, I've talked to every one of those property owners about that, this part of town, and those, this road and access, and, one, I really haven't had much to say for a couple years or so, since he did his bad behavior, you know, around the clock with folks. Because of those conversations, is there any reason, you know, if they support me or oppose me politically, or because of all the talk?
It might be more, it might be, those, those concerns might be more relevant if this were a quasi-vitalary hearing, but in fact, this is a legislative matter.
No, it's true.
It has actually no, there's actually no concern, legal concern on that part, or I think on anybody's. So, you don't have to be, you don't have to.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm an open book. I literally, I mean, as I alluded to, after I first was elected mayor, we tried to get all the property owners together, along with Pat Allen, the chair of the Planning Commission and staff, on multiple, to try to help things along, and there clearly was not a desire to try to reach similar agreement. And then... And then, quite honestly, then we learned of problems with the Oregon ODOT's transportation planning rule that put great restrictions on this part of our community and limited the ability for it to be developed and reduce barriers, but because of them realizing errors to the transportation planning rule and changes that they're making enabled us to get, to start the conversation that we're having, maybe concluding of this first chapter today. So if council would like me to recuse...
There's no need to. And I would, I would urge Mayor Mott to do that.
Okay.
If there's no reason, I see no, I see no reason to react to a situation that's basically a picture.
Fair enough. Questions for, or Julie, would you like to say anything in response to testimony?
If I may, I just have a couple of responses. Just to clarify, ODOT was contacted. We did notify in accordance with our normal agency notification, the proper staff person. We don't notify the top of the, you know, the chief operator at PGE. We don't, you know, notify the governor. We notify the person that's identified as the staff contact, and they did provide responses. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And I, quite honestly, I talked to Pat Garrett, head of ODOT, about our community. So, I mean, for whatever that's worth.
And I guess just another clarification. This isn't anything other than a transportation system plan amendment. It's identifying, and I'll go back one slide, it's changing the functional classification from a local to a collector. It's clarifying that there's going to be connection points to Elworth and Handley. It is confirming that there will be one access to 99W. Ultimately, that would have to go through a process with ODOT, with ODOT to determine where and how that's designed, and there'd be additional review, and it's confirming that Bouchong Terrace is still on the potential map for a local street connection. That's it. It's not changing zones. It's not identifying alignments. It's not designing the road. It's not identifying who's paying, and that's not appropriate for a TSP amendment. So I, I want to stress that, that as Mayor May said, that's certainly something that could happen at a later date, and the planning commission, I think, was supportive of that concept, and if that's something that the council wants to recommend through a separate motion or a resolution at a future date, we can certainly do that.
Julia?
Yes.
So I just want to be, make sure I heard you correctly. Right now, we are not determining who's paying. You said that.
That is correct. This transportation system plan does not determine who pays or how. There are options that are opened up by this TSP amendment because it would be a local street. It allows it to be creditable for city transportation SDCs as well as county TDT.
She said local. She meant collector, so.
Sorry. Yeah, what, what did he said? And I guess that's all I feel I need to respond to. If there's questions, I can certainly respond to anything else.
Right.
I just have a question, just to confirm. Cedar Brookway, as listed on the TSP, has been there since 2005, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Julia, bear with me here with a little patience, if you could. I've got a list of things, and several of them are just to help clarify and address some of the questions by residents that testified tonight. And so, number one, this is not a new and additional street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's all, what all's we're doing tonight is changing the designation.
And clarifying connection points.
And clarifying connection points. And so, construction costs has been a big concern. I heard that from the residents, but previously, under the previous designation, who would have had to bear 100% of the costs, Julia?
Yeah, if it's not a collector and it's not eligible for city SDCs or county TDTs, eventually, ultimately, it's the developer, the property owner, that's responsible.
Right, so before this amendment, the residents would have had to pay 100% of the cost of the construction of the road and receive zero credits for transportation fees. With this new designation as collector, they'll be able to receive credits for land dedication and cost of construction, with some limits. There are some very specific limits in how that works. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that actually is in your packets. It's a memo, again, in response to some questions that the planning commission had on this issue. It is part of Exhibit 1K, and Bob Galati prepared a memo kind of clarifying how SDC, county, city, and county credits were applied. It's on pages 175 and 176 of your packet.
So while tonight's action and discussions don't necessarily get into exact dollars of what it might cost, it's certainly going to be a net less cost to the property owner because they will receive significant credits back against their transportation fees.
That's our expectation, yes.
Right, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Counselor, one thing I want to make, one of your comments was that they'll receive, they'll be eligible for.
Eligible, yeah, if, if they file the paperwork and request them.
Right.
Right?
To meet those standards.
Thanks for the clarification. Let's see, third question here. There's a concern over timing of when the road will be built. My understanding is the road will not be constructed until the property owners decide to go ahead and develop their property, at which time their private engineering firms will design the road, and their contractors will construct it.
Unless, unless someone else steps in to do it. So that's the, what you're suggesting is the current obligation, but other entities could do it in the future.
Right.
So it could be the city. It could be a neighbor. It could be, it could be another project and an adjoining property that reaches an agreement with their neighbor to build, build the road to facilitate whatever they're doing.
Exactly. The only point I want to make is that the city's not going to come in there next year and decide to build the road.
There is...
On their own with, and force the property owner, for example, the Antique Mall to, they're not going to be forced to shut down because the street's going to go right through the middle of them, correct?
Correct. And I'll also add that if a road project were proposed on an adjacent property or, or some future city action, there'd be a public process. There would be negotiations, you know, it's not like the property would just be taken because it's on the transportation system plan. There'd be a process, and there'd be, you know, an opportunity for people to have influence and say over how that road alignment were to happen.
Good, that sounds like pretty fair clarification to that one for, to me. Okay, I'll check that off the list. There's also concern from the property owners that their existing access points, while they didn't go specifically this far, but I'm going to interpret it a little bit here, but the concern, the existing access points possibly because of tonight's motion, could be shut down tomorrow. I don't see that as part of the action we're doing. They would only be shut down when and if the property owner decides to develop their property and Cedar Brookway is, is constructed. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's a great question, and that certainly was a concern raised by some, especially at the planning commission hearing, that even if the road goes through as properties develop, that's when their accesses would, would be closed. It's not going to happen automatically, and it's not going to happen until development occurs.
Right, and, and that would be in a, in a process where the property owner would control their destiny of their access, because they'd then have access off Cedar Brookway over to either one of the two lights or the new access point at the 990 feet in the middle.
Correct.
But either way, they control their own destiny. Okay, I'll check that one off the list. And then alignment, there's concern over alignment. I heard specifically, my property is going to be cut in, in half and doesn't make it as developable as possible, but we're not determining alignment in this process, and it will be determined in a secondary process to follow, and the property owners will get to have input on that and agree so that the alignment is to the best of, for their property and their interests. Is that right?
Yes, if it doesn't happen through a formal alignment process or, you know, separate meetings that are directed by, you know, of staff to have some discussions and to try to identify an alignment, as, as was kind of discussed this evening, then it would be as development occurs, and the property owner, the developer at the time, would identify really how, how it works best for their project and their alignment. They need to show how they're not completely messing up their adjacent neighbors, but it's really ultimately up to them as development occurs.
All right, that, that sounds good. And I just want to close my comments with one summary. Tonight, all's we're doing is changing the designation from a local street to a collector and financially benefiting the property owners substantially, because before they would have had to pay for the entire street, now they are eligible for credits. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Just to follow a comment on something Counselor Langer brought up. So not tonight, but in the future, any accommodation that might need to be made with zoning, if a property is divided, would be done in some future process. Correct?
Absolutely. I'm absolutely correct, and that's why...
After alignment.
It's not a zone change. We're not, it may be something that people want to request something in the future. There'd be another public process, agency notice, DLCD notice. We'd be looking at transportation impacts with that zone change. You'd come back to planning commission and council for, for a decision if, if that were to be proposed.
So there would be recourse, but this is not, this is a very tiny step along that whole, long line of things that has to happen.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Questions? Yes?
Just a general comment. We, as council in general, want as much public input as we can get. We want input from the owners. We are making, are basing our decisions not only with staff information, but with information coming from the citizens. So I just want to assure everybody that we certainly take that into high regard, and we always and will never shut down the opportunity for a citizen to have input.
Any other, any, any other comments or questions? Thank you, Julia. Thanks, thank you and your team for the hard work in engaging the community and the property owners on this suggested ordinance. Certainly thank the planning commission for their long hearings in reviewing this. Any discussion from council on the proposed ordinance? Joe, you want to give any comment on the proposed ordinance?
I have nothing.
You have to raise the, hit the button, be able to...
Sorry, I got this backwards. Nothing additional to add. Thank you, sir.
I think it, you know, it's part of the, as we talked about, you know, important duties and responsibilities of council and improving our infrastructure, enabling development to occur within our city in a reasonable fashion, removing barriers is part of our charge. It does not certainly compel anyone to accelerate or require development to occur. People can do what they want with their property, when they want to do with it, but I think this is a great, a great step for our community. If there's no other discussion, is there anyone who want to make a motion to recapture?
I will move that we recapture and adopt ordinance 2012-012.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Sylvia?
Ordinance 2012-012, an ordinance approving an amendment to the transportation system plan, a comprehensive plan regarding the functional classification of Cedar Brookway. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor President Grant is absent. Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Thank you, council. Thank you, Julia. We'll move on to city manager report.
Hi, I always have this backwards. I'll get this straight, sorry. Mayor and council, I have three quick items for you tonight. The first item is just an informational item. As is normal this time of year, our outside auditors have arrived and are starting to do the audit work that they do every year. They started yesterday, should be here for about two weeks. So if you're in City Hall and see some folks huddled in a conference room, those are our outside auditors doing the important work that they do and starting that process. The second item is just a reminder, this Friday is First Friday in Old Town, which is the Main Street program. It's been doing that over the summer, but I think it's got some additional intrigue this Friday because it's homecoming night, and they're doing a big promotion with the Bowman in terms of tailgating. So there are a lot of activities in historic Old Town this Friday night before the game, and I would encourage folks to participate. I think there's some creative activities with some of the local businesses, and, and they play Park Rose, I believe it's the homecoming game, but come on downtown early and enjoy yourselves at some of the businesses downtown. And last but not least, as the council and the mayor know, I was at the League of Oregon Cities Conference this past week with a number of staff. Mayor Mayes was there, and our city was recognized. And I wanted to let Anna Lee, our HR director and risk manager, talk a little bit about employee safety and how important we take that here at City Hall, and she's got a few comments, and then I'll be done for the evening, unless you have questions. So, Anna?
Thank you. Yes, we were recognized for a silver award through League of Oregon Cities and our insurance company, CIS, and those awards don't come to every city. It's dedicated by the leadership of our city and our employees, which are our most important asset. We take the safety of our employees very seriously while they're on the job, and we've initiated some programs to help with that. We have a safety committee that's comprised of actual representatives from each of the departments, and they come and they get trained by CIS, our insurance company, to be the ambassadors of safety. They do building inspections every three months on all of our city facilities, and just to ensure that we're doing everything we can to have an environment of, that promotes safety to all of our employees. We also do annual ergonomic assessments for everyone and, you know, initialize, making sure that people are properly sitting at their desks and giving them all of the tools to be, to be safe, and because we know that a lot of the work that we do is very repetitive in nature. And then also, we have an active return to work program so that in the case that someone does get injured on the job, we do have light duty work for them to do while they're being, while they're recovering, and then bring them back to work as soon as possible. So just to mention a few programs that we have, and because of those programs, that's why we were recognized at the League of Oregon Cities, and we're really proud of that. So, and we'll continue to do that because our employees are the most important assets that we can have. So, thank you very much.
And of course, we're going to go for the gold next year. So this is just like the Olympics, there's gold, silver, and bronze, but when you think about the work that we do, especially in the police department and public works, those are pretty dangerous jobs. So I think the work that we're focused on, I'm glad that CIS and the league recognizes cities that take safety seriously, and I think this city has a long history of doing that, and we're going to continue. So, any questions for myself or the other department heads that are here?
Questions? Congratulations. That's a credit to staff for getting the silver award, as well as, yeah, we don't want anyone to get hurt. We, we've certainly had, from time to time, individuals getting hurt, and we don't, it's not pleasant, no one wants that to happen. So, yeah, gold next year will be awesome. I appreciate so many staffers that were able to make part of the League of Oregon Cities, able to bring back some good things that we'll be able to share with council in the coming weeks, and we formally received the governor's fitness award for our fieldhouse, which we all will be proud of, and we'll get that to, Christian will give it to Lance probably to display in the fieldhouse so everyone can see. It's a nice, it's a nice plaque. Other announcements from counselors? Counselor?
I have two, I have an announcement and a comment. Wanted to remind the community, there's the Halloween Hill Climb is coming up, which is a fundraiser that's being sponsored or is being organized by Hungry Raccoon, which is a new business in town that is a benefit for Main Street. I think it's on the 21st of October, and I think you go to Halloween Hill Climb, either dot org or dot com to register, and it's a family-friendly event. I'm sure they've been in contact with the police department in setting up the route and, you know, making sure that, that they're able to put the event on safely with... and, you know, making sure that, that they're able to put the event on safely with police support, and so encourage people to come to that. I remember every year going to Give and Gobble on Thanksgiving Day morning at 6:00 a.m., it's pouring down rain, it's 40 degrees outside, and, you know, 2,000 people show up, and you're thinking, crazy!
Because it's fun.
And I'm hoping that.
Climbing a hill.
Yeah, I'm hoping that Halloween Hill Climb will, you know, be the beginning of, you know, an annual event that would help keep Main Street going and help fundraise for Main Street and be another fun event that people can do, even though the weather is, you know, often not that great, so. And my other comment would be that last Thursday night, we had a fatality on Rogers Road just north of town, and that's a tragic event for any community, and I don't know if we responded or not, but that couldn't have been, no, no car accident is a fun thing to respond to, but an event like that, that is so dramatic, that individual, you know, passed away and will never, will never see their family again and won't be doing those things that they, you know, had hoped to do. And so I want to make sure that, that our condolences go out to the family and to either our police department or TVFNR who responded, because that could not have been a pleasant call to respond to, but I'm sure they went with the same haste that they always go, hoping that, you know, that that person would, you know, be rescued. But unfortunately, that person passed away, and so I wanted to make note that, that we, well, it didn't happen necessarily in Sherwood, it's right outside of Sherwood. Thousands of Sherwood residents use that road every day. I just used it last week when I went, or two weeks ago when I went up to jury duty, and it's a very nice wide road, and we love having it, but it can be very dangerous when you're driving 55. So I just wanted to make note that our thoughts go out to that, to both the families that were involved in that accident, and to the bystanders who stopped and tried to help, because I understand there were many, so, that's all.
Other announcements? Yes?
I just have to make a council comment, just because I'm a citizen, I appreciate the position I'm in. I hear a lot of conversation about what businesses are and aren't coming into Sherwood, and I happened to be at an economic summit last week, and I just want to say, it's really not our place, and we cannot legislate what businesses choose to locate here. We can do certain codes and compliance things, but there's a lot of citizens that are coming to me and saying, well, you can't let this happen. And the nature of the United States of America is that there's a certain amount of freedom and capitalism. And I just have to say, I appreciated my time last week at the economic summit, so anyhow, we had a great discussion there. Then I have a couple of things from the senior center. The senior center is in pretty desperate need of volunteers for lunch and drivers, and they'll take any help they can get, so the times that they need are somewhere between 10:30 and 1:30. So if you have an hour or two or half hour, they would just really appreciate your time. And I know that the city staff is working to put something together for that, so I appreciate that. They also have a really cool raffle going right now, so you can be a part of that, helping them read their, meet their fundraising goal for the year. I also just wanted to say that the cultural arts commission is meeting this Thursday night at 6:30 here, and there will be a discussion of what our future will look like and how we will continue to serve the community and some of the, I wanted to bring council up to speed on some of the topics of conversation we're having, which is how we can begin to introduce public art into the community.
Excellent.
And just some other, some other projects that we've had in the past, and I just really appreciate the members of the cultural arts commission for their desire to make a contribution and an impact as we move forward and sort of evolve as there are greater needs in some areas and less needs in some areas. And the one thing I can definitely say is I will not be selling cotton candy anymore. They retired me. Swear I got my start, but I'm too old. Okay, a couple of.
It's good to be able to let other folks do it, too.
I know, and I do love and appreciate the fact that the schools are able to use the cotton candy machine. And that brings me to the Harvest Festival at the middle school, which is October 20th. It's a very, very fun event, and it's very popular, and I encourage everybody to check that out from 4:00 to 9:00. And then I just have to give a little note, Disney's Little Mermaid Junior tickets went on sale yesterday, and they are selling like wildfire. So if you intend to go, you should definitely get your tickets soon. We had in one day about half of the premier seating, which was 20 bucks a seat, was gone. So it's, it's a great show, and we are the first in our area to be doing it. The next public school is Westview High School, so we're in great company.
All right. What, and what, remind me the dates of?
November 2nd. We, I just realized that we opened a month from today. No pressure, I'm fine. November 2nd and 3rd at 7:30 on Friday night, and 2:30 and 7:30 on Saturday, and Wednesday is Halloween that week, and so we couldn't possibly ask these young children, because there's a lot of young children in this cast, to give up their Halloween. That's why we've created two shows on Saturday, that we're letting them have their Halloween, then we're doing a tech dress on Thursday, and there you go. And many, 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 many thanks to Mary Ann Thunderhide and Jeanette Godfrey at the middle school, because we're having a great time, and they're so supportive and so fun.
Question.
Yes?
Where do you buy tickets?
You can buy tickets at Let's Make Music in Old Town tomorrow, starting tomorrow, or online at vpafoundation.org anytime.
All right, I got my to-do list.
It's awesome. We have 61 kids, and they're amazing.
Great.
I had something that Robyn Talking made me remember, that this Saturday and Sunday, they are having the Good Samaritan Saturday at the, for the senior center. It's a senior center outreach through Providence to help seniors who want to stay in their home with their yard work, do their gutters, clean their.
Well, Friday and Saturday? Or just Saturday?
It's, it used to be, I'll speak on that note, it used to be just Good Samaritan Saturday, but they have expanded it to Sunday because it is a service project, and a lot of people who really want to do it can't do it because soccer conflicts and other activities that are going on Saturday. And football. And so, and so it's 8 o'clock, if you want to, you can sign up in advance with Mark Fettersfield through Providence, or you can just show up. They have a breakfast on Saturday that's very good, and then they, if you are just a drop-in, they'll assign you on a crew. It services not only the Sherwood area, but also part of King City, and my family and I have done it for years. It is superbly fun, even when my little ones were super little. Declan would play with Grandma's kick dog. That's, you know, it would be so much fun, and he wasn't really great with the weeding, but he was really fun in helping Fluffy. And it's, it's an awesome service project, even in the rain, it's fun. And so if you want to do it Sunday because you have conflicts, they're actually meeting at 9 o'clock at the grocery outlet.
Okay. Counselor Langer?
Reminder that Saturday, October 13th, is our 26th Annual Great Onion Festival, sponsored, well, organized by Chamber of Commerce, and there will be the old famous Fireman's Chicken brought to you by our Old Town Rotary, so come and get your chicken. It's at Archer Glen, and.
Same recipe?
Yes.
Same recipe, yeah, they got the secret recipe.
They had to buy it.
One of the very few times of the year you can get your, your old classic Fireman's Chicken.
Joe hasn't had that yet, have you?
Yeah.
Oh, you've got to have some of that.
That's why we stayed so long. First thing we ever had.
And then just a reminder that, starting in November, so we're only four weeks away, the Chamber of Commerce is starting to organize that new great big map of Sherwood that will market and locate certain businesses or, or other certain landmarks. So if you want to have something on that map, you need to get with the chamber, Nancy Bruton, between November and January, and, you know, it's first come, first served. So I'd be there on day one in November when she starts doing that, only a few weeks away. That's all I've got.
Excellent. Yes, nothing going on these, second day of October. Very exciting. Do not forget, in addition to everything else going on, High School Booster Club Auction is the 27th of October. Get your ticket, don't miss it. It'll be, it's a great event. They raise a lot of money for our youth sports groups, especially when they had such significant cuts. You're, what are you?
Nothing.
You itching to say something after I say something?
The police officer over here has something.
Well, I'll just interrupt and let him go right ahead. Ty?
Great.
Don't lose the thought.
Just because we're talking about dates, and the 13th came up. Tipicop is going to be at Robin Hood, or Robin Hood, Red Robin. So it's.
How long does, what is the window of time Tipicop occurs? Is it all day?
It's 11:00 to 8:00.
Okay.
11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., we will be there.
So if you're already planning to go to the Onion Festival, get your chicken, then, and do some shopping, digest, and then go to the, go to Red Robin for dinner.
Perfect.
I got my, I'm getting all scheduled.
What time again, Ty?
11:00 to 8:00.
11:00 to 8:00.
So, High School Booster Club, don't miss it. With the, with cuts to the funding of athletics in the community, it's, it's important for them to raise money for that, similarly, everything else we do in town, which is fantastic. Craig and staff, when I were at a PGE event coordinating Washington County electeds and first responders to storm events, to make sure that we improve, find out wherever there are holes in our process to communicate effectively in dealing with minor and major storm events. It is the storm season beginning, and in fact, they highlighted that 50 years ago this month was the Columbia Day Storm, which I do not remember. I was not around. Not yet born, and, but anyway, so they made lots of improvements, and it was a great thing, and glad we were involved with every other city in our area to do that. Made lots of progress at the animal shelter down in Newburgh a couple of weekends ago, whenever that was, with Habitat for Humanity, so that was nice. There's nothing going on in our town. We're undoubtedly forgetting some things.
I'm sure we are.
It's such a good thing that we live here.
The, if we missed it on our Archer, we'll get it on the website. Lots of stuff to do for this month, next month, and the rest of the, rest of this year. So, I swear, there's something else that's on my tongue that I completely.
There's not going on.
Oh, well, any other announcements? Good with your order? It's.
I, I just have to say, the cultural arts commission has produced an arts calendar, and they are available in the library. That will help. It's look hard, it's really cool. Kaylee Nielsen designed it.
Yeah. Oh, did want to, several counselors did go to that Greater Portland Inc. Economic Summit, and I think Robyn, Counselor Folsom made the comment of how, how exciting everyone got with the efforts that we're doing regionally to put both the business community and the government to try to point them all in the same direction to attract, attract businesses, but more importantly, help new businesses start and help existing businesses grow. We will all be better off if we don't do it, others will, and we'll be left out in the cold, so. With that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.